Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of May 23, 2019. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. And as we just saluted the flag, I would like to express the gratitude of the Putnam Valley School District to all the people who have served in our armed forces, both in the past and currently. And we use this weekend to remember them and acknowledge them. More boring, I'd like to resolve to approve the minutes for the following Board of Education meetings: March 12, 2018, March 22, 2018, April 6, 2018, April 24, 2018, and May 1, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Wait, wait, just a question.
Yes.
What year is this?
Oh.
Ignore all that. There's no minutes attached.
Right.
That's last year's.
Okay.
There is no motion.
Somebody, if we get a little tesseract and turn back time and let's start again. Okay, so there's no minutes to approve. All right. We better move on to something fun. Let's go into Pride in Putnam Valley.
Okay, tonight we have the pleasure of providing recognition to a group of students. Go there.
Okay.
Tonight, we have the privilege of honoring a group of students who spent many Sundays and much time working with students who have a need for more team development, for being with others who don't have that opportunity as much, and for the parents also of those students, so that they can see that their students can participate with others and enjoy the real excitement of team play and sport. These students have worked with advisor Mr. Baker, and I did get to see the graduation ceremony, and it was really something that was very moving. Because these students, our students, our high school students, have given of themselves, and they see what that kind of generosity of spirit can produce. There is a certain feeling that you get when you have made a difference in someone's life. And that's what happens with the Magma program. So I want to recognize the students, the seniors and the juniors, because there are about 40 students involved. So tonight, we're recognizing seniors and juniors, and the two parent volunteers, Diana Rourke and Jen Zimmerman, who have been part of this process and have offered their time to support this amazing program. When I sat at the graduation ceremony, I spoke to parents who were there seeing their children in a completely different way than they had before, seeing that they can enjoy themselves with others and be part of something that is so much in the fabric of our American society, the team environment. So with that, I have, with great thanks, I want to provide these certificates of the Pride in Putnam Valley to the following students. Please all come up. Seniors first. Why don't we have the seniors? Seniors first. Okay. These students will be going off to college next year, and would you feel uncomfortable telling us where you're going?
No.
Okay. That would be great. Okay, so we have Caitlin Cohn. She couldn't make it. Caitlin, no. And we have Kim Heidman.
I'm going to U Albany.
University of Albany, Kim Heidman. What are you going to study? Business administration. Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you. Next, we have Alice Surico.
SUNY Plattsburgh.
SUNY Plattsburgh. All I can think of is snow. Lots of snow. I hope you like it. Thank you. And what are you going to study again?
Special education.
Special education, there. And I'm sure having this experience gave you a feeling this is something you want to do with your life, and it's such a beautiful way to spend your life. Next, Luke Sidrima.
Fordham University.
Fordham University and...
Business.
Business, another business person. Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have...
Don't worry, Kim.
The juniors will come up. Sabrina Cross. Oh, you're not going to college then.
Give her another year, Dr. Wills.
She couldn't come. Okay. Angelica Ordonez. Diana Rourke.
That's the parent.
Parent.
Jen Zimmerman.
Is Diane here? No. And Jen Zimmerman, we have certificates for them. I would like to read...
We're forgetting somebody, aren't we forgetting?
What is that?
Miss Goldberg.
Ms. Goldberg.
You missed Ms. Goldberg.
Could you check to see? Oh. Sidney Goldberg. Sidney, Sidney served on... Sidney recently served on a committee, the Hiring Committee, for our Director of Curriculum Instruction. Very, very helpful. Thank you for that service. So I just want to read what the, what these awards actually say. So the Pride in Putnam Valley is presented to the student to recognize his or her outstanding service to the district's children through their work with the Magma soccer program. So this is very special, and we very much appreciate what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Wills, it's actually even more fascinating if you were to sit and list all of the other things these students are involved in. How they find the time to be there on Sundays is amazing. And once, one of the best speeches I ever heard somebody say years ago says, "It doesn't matter what you do, just make what you do matter." And Magma is all about making what you do matter. So congratulations again.
I'm just going to jump in and say one word about Magma.
I know, it's close to your heart. Try not to cry.
It really is. I think that what the students, what our high school students don't see, but I get to see, is when I walk into a classroom or down the halls, and our students who get to participate in the Magma program, you know, they can't wait to tell me or to ask if I'm coming to Magma on Sunday, if I'm coming to watch their soccer games. They, you know, are so thrilled, and they always look at my pictures on my phone because they know I take lots of pictures of them. But it is a place for them to belong when they often don't have that kind of team activity available for them, and you made it available, and I so appreciate that. And I know that their parents especially appreciate it. They have, I think this year, more than ever, the parent, the parent feeling and the parent participation and the bonding that has gone on for parents with students with disabilities has allowed them to really make connections that they had not previously had, and for them, it is so meaningful. I mean, at one point, we even had a parent coming up from Yonkers, just because it was the only thing that her child could participate in. So she did that long drive every Sunday, and I just want to let you know how meaningful you've made it for our students, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready for the next presentation?
Next, we have a presentation by the representatives of SELF, the Children's Environmental Literacy Foundation, and Ms. Garofy and...
Vicky and Lisa.
Vicky and Lisa, yes. Have been at our school throughout the year, working with our teachers, and teaching them the systematic understanding of what sustainability is. If you recall, two years ago, the board set as a mission that our school district would look at sustainability in all areas, in curriculum and in the way we run our schools, our organization and operations. And we had been doing, remember, an EPC project, and that project included a number of initiatives that would fall under a sustainability or green initiative. And therefore, you know, the geothermal, for example, that we put into the elementary school, and solar panels that we have, that we've installed, all of that was part of this EPC. And at the time, we wanted to ensure that students understood that what we were doing had and was intrinsic to our whole sense and mission, that we wanted to be a sustainability school, school district, a sustainable school district. And with that, SELF came in and worked with our staff and helped to develop some new thinking differently about how we do things. And so with that, we'll have the SELF presentation. We also will hear from two of our leaders in our schools, and this is, I think, the beauty of this project, is that our teacher leaders have come forth, and will be carrying on this banner throughout our school district. Jen Bruno, Liz Broussard have been very active in this process. So we want to see the whole picture tonight, and we'll start with SELF.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're honored and excited to be here tonight to share the work of the Sustainable Schools Project between SELF and Putnam Valley Schools. My name is Vicky Garofy, and I'm here with Lisa McHale, my colleague, who's been here working with the teachers through this journey. Thank you for having us here tonight, and thank you to Fran, Jeremy, Liz and Jen for supporting and leading this project. So I'm just going to rehash just a little bit of SELF, just in case there's people that don't know, I'll take a moment to briefly just talk about our mission, and that SELF had started in 2003 and worked with more than 9,000 K-12 teachers in the tri-state area and across the county. Last year now, we just hit our 1 million students, and excited that Putnam Valley is part of that number. So some of our core services that we focus our work around fall into three areas, being our professional learning for K-12 educators, and that is our curriculum support and professional development workshops that we lead with schools. Our second is whole school change, which is what Putnam Valley falls under for us, which is connecting classroom, curriculum and community to sustainability. And the third is our Summer Institute, which teachers from our committee have participated in over the course of the years, which really is a deeper dive into connecting sustainability to curriculum and teaching practices. So our professional learning approach is a universal concepts of sustainability, but every district and school starts at different places. SELF's education approach uses multiple pedagogies across disciplines and grade levels. We teach sustainability through the big ideas, which you may have seen throughout the school. They are in a lot of the classrooms of teachers that we've been working with and in the hallways, but these 12 concepts and skills are needed to understand EFS. An education program that considers the economic, environmental and social equity, which we call the three Es, gets to the heart of sustainability. We'll be including pictures throughout this presentation that highlight a lot of the big ideas that you'll see in their work. And currently, Phase One, we began with Putnam Valley Schools back in 2017, and we're here tonight to give an update on Phase Two, project goals, which strengthened the culture of sustainability throughout a continued curriculum support and custom programming that addresses whole school change. And here, we consider a lot of the work that we've done and from our first initial planning here with Putnam Valley and with Fran, about creating a legacy for sustainability, and you guys truly have done that. We were able to feature the Putnam Valley case study in a national publication, which highlights the connections to the three Cs, which we'll be sharing with you tonight, that fall under the curriculum pieces, the campus connections and the community engagement. And if you haven't already, this is accessible on the Green Schools National Networks Catalyst, and it is also seen on your Putnam Valley website. So one of SELF's roles was to help identify a systems map to visualize the overlapping connections between campus, community and curriculum, which was to help create a sustainability culture throughout the district. These campus changes inspire new learning opportunities and increase student engagement. Community stakeholders as well collaborated in a lot of the school, community projects and initiatives. And you can't see it that closely here, but it does show the multiple interconnections between where these areas overlap, which help to identify roles and project initiatives in a clear way.
And we'll post this on our website, so people can see this more.
And I'm going to turn it over to Lisa.
So our first C is connecting sustainability to the curriculum, and SELF supports implementation of sustainability principles and practices throughout the curriculum. And what we are going to be sharing are a few slides of some of the curriculum outcomes from our work this year with Putnam Valley teachers. And so we explored some of the outdoor spaces, and the maker space was a part of creating a classroom coaching on project and place-based learning, using the assets that were available in the Putnam Valley campuses. And teachers connected their learning to the energy performance contract. So we did lessons like solar versus fossil fuels, what are the merits of each? And this was a lesson on how many energy transfers there are from the, when you dig up the material or the sun shines until you actually are able to use the energy. And solar energy outperforms fossil fuels all the time. And everything we consume comes from nature and returns to nature, and so what is its complete journey and how is it connected to other systems? Product life cycles was a lesson we did with teachers and with students this year on choosing a product and following its life cycle from where it began until where it ended. And SELF presented sustainability lessons in the elementary school and the middle school, visiting teachers who were new to the project.
And this particularly, speaking to this, because it was really exciting to get into the kindergarten classroom, and for me, coming from working with children more directly than with adults, I was pretty excited to get into the classroom on this day. We entered the kindergarten classroom, and we had them define sustainability as we drew with all of our teachers, and they come up with a word, as you saw on the previous slide. And then afterwards, they struggled a little bit with these big words and vocabulary, and I said, "Okay, let's get back to the tables and let's draw what sustainability means to you." And if you can tell, on this picture on the left was a girl that had draw, that drew solar panels, wind turbines on the bottom right, and even had details about recycling pan grease and the use for fuel. So I was just blown away by this picture alone and how the children really connected and expressed sustainability through artwork.
We continue to work with the sustainability team to create interactive learning experience to integrate education for sustainability. And teachers had time to work across grade levels and disciplines using the common framework of the big ideas. So this was this past summer during two days of curriculum writing. And teachers were able to collaborate to connect these big ideas to the next generation science standards and the common core standards. And SELF was invited to present at the Innovative Teacher Academy, and we presented a place-based workshop during the academy. And Putnam Valley teachers for the past two years have taken a deeper dive into education for sustainability by attending our four-day SELF Summer Institute at Manhattanville. And this year, Leslie, down on the bottom left, attended. She's in third grade. She's one of Jen's team. And she joined the larger sustainability team that had come. We had eight teachers come in 2017. And some of the middle school teachers attended a meeting at the United Nations on the UN Sustainable Development Goals, and they shared what they had learned with the sustainability team.
So we move on to the second C of the campus connections through sustainability. Curriculum brings opportunities for students to engage on their campuses and connect to the Energy Performance Contract. And we started our journey two years ago with the teachers defining sustainability and creating, defining it in one single word, and the word cloud represents the collective responses leading to common vocabulary and culture of sustainability at Putnam Valley. And these are now at every single building, all three campus buildings in the entrance way. So during one of our SELF's professional development, we invited Mike Smith from ConEdison Solutions to provide an overview of the Energy Performance Contract, which this was a great opportunity for those teachers to take a deeper dive and really understand what's happening on campus and why it's important to their instructional practices. This supported the teachers to visualize the potential opportunities and the endless connections to their lessons and curriculum. The sustainability team, following that presentation, toured the basement and the geothermal system at the middle school and discussed ways to find the connections and curiosity about how can we get the kids down here in the basement. And then these next two slides just highlight some of the campus changes through the lighting, the building management system, the windows and doors and installations, and then, of course, the solar panels and wind supporting.
And so the last C is community. And so communicating the vision is connected to, is connected to the curriculum and the campus is how we work with the community. And Putnam Valley has a wonderful tech teacher who helped to create Sustain PV, which is a living document where teachers can add lessons and comments and keep the school and the community connected. And this website's evolved to meet the needs of the teachers and the community. So the top is the way Sustain PV, Sustainable Putnam Valley used to look.
Phase one.
Phase one, and then the bottom is the new improved website. And so last year, around this time, and coming up in June for the elementary school, the middle school and the elementary school engaged in Sustain PV Week. Some of their initiatives were to ban the bag, thanks to Jen, and the recycling markers, and community stakeholders were invited to participate during this week. The middle school also did the product life cycles as their teachers had done. And the middle school teachers, Sarah Riley in particular, helped to organize a trash-free lunch during Sustain PV Week. And there was a hike on Granite Mountain led by community members at the Hudson Highlands Land Trust and the Putnam Highlands Audubon, and the relationship between the district and the community continues to grow through a shared love and concern for nature.
There we go again.
So what next? What does all of this mean? And as we've gone through this year and identified opportunities and challenges, and where does this really progress to in terms of sustainability for schools, is that the Green Ribbon School Award is something that has come to the surface, and that is the U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon Schools. It's a recognition award that helps to promote effective school sustainability practices. We feel Putnam Valley is poised to apply. The three pillars are really what help shape and guide the application process, and it gives you three areas to start, which are the facilities and campus changes and support what you're doing on campus in terms of the environmental impact and cost. Pillar two is the health and wellness, as connected to the new Health and Wellness Center here at Putnam Valley. And then pillar three is the curricular connections to the environmental literacy. During our professional development workshops with the teachers, often we referred to Warwick Valley School District, who received the Green Ribbon Award. And Warwick School District had been on the leading edge of green education, sustainability and energy efficient practices for several years. All four schools in Warwick District have been awarded the Green Ribbon. And we were lucky enough to get connected with the district and took the committee on a field trip to Warwick to explore and see their sustainability practices and a lot of what they have on the facilities. Nope, that's okay. We're doing two here. We can't do this with the... So our products, our project outcomes of Phase Two have been an increase in environmental literacy, K-12. Our students are increasingly aware of the environmental issues and how to connect to social and economic problems, thinking in a systems-thinking mindset and problem-solving. There's been an increase of place-based learning, connecting to the outdoor campus facilities to understand how their decisions and actions impact the world around them. And the third, nature as an integral part of learning, and the use of integrating the outdoor spaces and instruction and nature hikes and field trips. And also that they were continuing to expand and grow the sustainability team with new teachers and leaders taking on the project. And then the final step of applying for the Green Ribbon. So with all of this being said, we have been honored to be part of this exciting transformation with the support of the administration, teachers, students and Putnam community. This project has transformed the mindset, practices and behaviors of all involved, and we're looking forward to seeing the legacy go on.
Oh. And we just want to give a few shout-outs. These are what some of the teachers and administrators have to say about working with the Children's Environmental Literacy Foundation. So this is Jeremy Luft, our incoming superintendent and champion of the schedule.
And coordination.
And coordination. Leanne Johnson, sixth grade math and science, one of our teachers who went to the UN to see some of the Sustainable Development Goals and has incorporated a lot of the big ideas and the SDGs into her learning. And our own Jen Bruno, third grade, who is, has, with Liz, co-chairing the sustainability team and is leading the charge in the elementary school. Thank you. And of course, Fran, who we are going to miss, who inspired this project and who called us up and said, "I want to tie all of the new infrastructure changes to the curriculum. I want students to be aware of what's going on. I want them to understand how it..." and help teachers connect it to the curriculum. And we are very pleased that she did that, and so thank you very much, Fran. We're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question about the Green Ribbon. What would you say would be the biggest obstacle for us in achieving that type of recognition?
The, I don't, there's, because of your campus initiatives, that's, you've pretty much met all of that first pillar. And working with SELF, you've pretty much met all of the criteria for the curriculum piece. Wellness, you have the Wellness Center coming up. The Wellness Teacher here at the school is on board with the Green Ribbon, and there's a committee starting... a committee starting to look at each particular part of the Green Ribbon in detail to make sure that we're on track. I think probably there might be a little bit of, one of the things that Warwick does have is they have somebody in each district who reports on a regular basis to this, each school, to the Assistant Superintendent on what are the new initiatives and how they are tied to the curriculum and the campus and the community. And I think, you know, incorporating student voice is always great. And so, if there are opportunities to, you know, ask the students and involve them in some of these initiatives, I think particularly at the high school, they're so busy that we haven't, we haven't had a lot of contact with the teachers yet in the high school. So I think there's a lot of opportunity, especially looking at some of the wonderful students you have here, to engage them in thinking about some of the sustainability initiatives and the Green Ribbon.
Great.
I think also communicating it and for the community, right? For the community to be aware of this process so you have the support as well.
Yeah, Warwick does have a very strong thing called Sustainable Warwick. It's been in place for years. It's a driving force in the community. And so, they, they exerted a lot of influence on, on.
They exerted a lot of influence on, on some of the changes that happened in Warwick. And Warwick did work with SELF. We were the curriculum piece in 2016. We worked with them. They had their own little mini summer institute, and we worked with them exclusively. And they had all of their teachers involved, from the art teacher to the gym teacher to the STEM teacher to the science teacher to, you know, everybody was involved, English, social studies. So it was across, across all disciplines and great levels.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
So along the Green Schools Initiative, I know that we have a committee of people that sort of dissecting the application, along with the help from Vicky and Lisa and SELF, and identifying sort of where we think we're okay, and we just have to document the areas where we think we have to improve. I know that Dave is very interested in continuing to pursue it. There's a huge facilities piece of it. They asked for things like tons of garbage carted away and how your initiatives are reducing that. So there's certainly pieces of that application process that will take some time for us to document, and as we make changes, to be able to show increases. I think we're privileged to have the amazing facilities we do, and the fact that we have solar and geothermal and all that certainly meets a lot of that piece. But SELF has done a tremendous work with the district in terms of the curricular piece, beginning those community connections. And I think that's another piece of the application that we have to continue to work on is showing connections with the community. But it's certainly something that we intend on continuing to pursue. Paper straws.
So.
It's all about paper straws, right? Or reusable bottles.
Next, we'd like to present Ms. Bros, Mrs. Bros, Liz Bros, and Jen Bruno, who are going to talk about our, some next steps through our school district.
You have to get their shoes.
Their leadership, yes. Let's look at the shoes to see how, how sustainability will move ahead.
Thank you. I'm Liz Bros. This is Jen Bruno. Jen is a third-grade teacher in the elementary school. I'm in the elementary school library. Jen and I collaborate on a number of different things. We work together for the Maker Club. We do the Garden Club together. We've done a lot of different curriculum development together. So we're, we're good buddies, and we are here tonight as co-coordinators for the district's sustainability movement. Our goal, really our goal is to get students to know that they can and should make a difference in our communities. And they can do so even at their young age. In the elementary school in particular, I think kids don't realize all that they can do. And pushing kids that are older to do those things that they can do. And when we talk about change under the umbrella of sustainability, the fact that that could mean learning about the interconnectedness of plants and animals and how we influence that connection and taking a look at ecosystems, or looking at our diverse community and learning about the needs of others and how we can help those needs and how they might help our needs. So a lot of community relationship building. Whoops.
So this year, instead of us doing our full Sustain PV Week, we are looking to have a Sustainability Festival that will take place on the elementary school campus. Our idea is to start with four 15-minute rotating stations for grades one through four to participate in. Kindergarten is going to do their own mini-stations on their own, and that was only due to time constraints. We only have so many hours in the school day, and we still need to give our students lunch and recess and things like that. So we originally wanted to do more than four stations, but due to time constraints, we really had to break it down to four. We decided to base our four stations around the big ideas. Some of them are related to more than one big idea of sustainability. Another reason that we are starting with just the elementary school, so going back a couple of years, we had the SELF Committee. There were teachers across the district that participated. This year, the district had offered an after-school opportunity for teachers to participate, and we had some new people show up that were really interested. We also had people that were part of the SELF Committee originally that unfortunately are still, they were still interested, which is great. However, having the after-school part was just not working because they had other commitments already to do. So we kind of had this two separate groups going, and most of the people that could still come to the meetings because they started at four o'clock and other people had commitments, most of those people were still elementary school teachers. So we decided to start small this year. So we're starting at the elementary school only. We are hoping that it's going to be a huge success, and then we can build from there and hopefully then involve the middle school and high school campuses going on into the future.
Is there a date?
Yes, I'm sorry. It is June 5th. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate with us, and if not, then we have a rain date of June 10th. So one of the stations that we are going to have, we are basing off of the idea of change over time, and we're calling it PV Then and Now. We have Sam Oliverio coming to participate and to facilitate this station for us. He will be in the Outdoor Learning Center, and he will be basically visualizing with the students and showing them visual representations of what PV looked like then compared to now. And hopefully, our students will be able to see that things are constantly changing and that that's still part of everything that we need to think about when it turns to sustainability. Our next station, that will be what Liz and I are facilitating, is going to be about systems and interdependence. So we are going to be down at the elementary school pond, exploring our local ecosystem. You may have noticed our fancy shoes. So the reason we're wearing them is not because we're trying to set a new fashion trend. We, last year, I wrote a grant to the Candreva Environmental Foundation, and we were lucky enough to be awarded a $500 grant. With that grant, we have purchased these reusable waterproof shoe covers, enough for one full class set of students as well as three or four adults, as well as some extendable pond netting. We also have other equipment already, but our hope is that we can go down to our pond area, not just on our festival day, but it will be open to all classes and students in the elementary school. I mean, if the middle school and high school want to come over too at some point, and teachers want to use it, they are more than welcome to. But it's really going to be to show to students that, you know, everything is affected by everything else. So one quick thing, this picture that you're looking at here is what the pond looked like in the fall, I would say. Dave Spittle and the grounds crew have been instrumental in helping us get this area cleared. So we have to thank him and the grounds crew for doing such an awesome job. They also put in this walking path, just a little boardwalk area, just so that when we do have students down there, they do have a place to sit if needed when we're doing a little bit of, you know, an activity or something. So they have been extremely helpful, and we really need to thank them about that. And then basically, we're really hoping that classes will use the pond area now that it's clean and safe for students to go to, because it really is connected to the New York State Next Gen Science Standards, and also through sustainability, which is going to be amazing, and I'm super excited about it.
Another station that we're going to set up is, centers around the long-term effects and community. We're calling it "What Is This Poll?", because there's a lot of curiosity, at least on the elementary school campus, from both teachers and students. What are these ConEd polls? And what, and we haven't explained it. So we're taking this opportunity, and we are really making good use out of Dave Spittle, who's being a very good sport, and he's going to man that station, which is also important because Dave Spittle's a part of our community, is a big part. And the children see him, but they don't interact with him. And we want the kids on every campus to know the people who are involved in their lives more than they actually realize. So he's going to man that poll, that station, and he's going to talk to the kids about the energy sources that we're using as a district, so solar, geothermal. But he's also going to talk briefly about wind, because while we're working as hard as we can in the classroom to make sure that kids do have this understanding, he's going to show them in real form what it looks like. And we'll provide him with all the assistance we can. So he's, he's really being a wonderful asset. Our final station is another way that we're trying to reach out to the community, because we really agree that reaching out to the community and getting to know each other, because we're so diverse and our needs are different as a district, as individuals, on so many different levels. We wanted to have a part of the community come to us and be a part of this festival. And so, we reached out to the food pantry, and they were gracious enough to say, "Yes, we'll come, and we'll give you two volunteers, and they're going to come, and we've selected several books that they can choose from, but they're going to talk about what a food pantry is. They're going to talk about ways to help." And we are actually, and we'll talk about this in a little bit, going to have, let the kids know that there are certain food items they can bring in. And the food pantry's given us certain items, and have an opportunity for them to help that day, so that we're really connecting the dots for these kids, that they know that this is our community and you're making a difference, right now, right today, whether it's time or donations, reaching out a hand and getting to know each other, because we're diverse and we all have resources that we need to share. I think that'll benefit the school as well as the community to get to know one another. So that's our final station.
So next week, on May 30th, we are having a whole school assembly that Liz and I will run for the elementary school. We will be talking to the students about our Trash-Free Lunch Challenge. So last year, we did a whole school kind of challenge where we were challenging the students. We kept track of how much trash we used in one week, I'm sorry, in one day, and then we promoted this trash-free lunch, and then we compared it to the amount, and it actually did go down. And students were actually able to see the amount of trash that they produced and how less it got because of the trash-free challenge. So this year, we're throwing in a little bit more of a twist. We are going to do it by grade level this year. We will be talking to the students about how, on our Sustainability Festival Day, they can bring in their own plate and reusable water bottle or container, and we are going to be challenging them by grade level to see who can produce the least amount of trash. Sandra Renkin from R-Mark, we've met with her, and she has been really helpful and supportive. We know that we need to provide our students with a hot lunch during the day. We can't just say we're only bringing stuff from home. So we went to her and we had requested, could we do perhaps a hot dog lunch and not have the hot dog wrapped in extra trash that needs to be thrown away? Can the students bring in their own tray or plate to carry it on, and then they can take that home with them? That's one less piece of trash to be thrown away. She also said that they would buy bulk chips for us, for the students. They would provide apples, as well as the juice and the water and the milk, which would be great. So we're really thankful to have her on our side. And she really did come with us, with us, with some good ideas that we can look to going into the future with, which is really nice. So we've made another connection there. We also have a new trash can system that we are looking to put into place. When we went on the Warwick visit with SELF, we noticed that in their cafeteria, they had several different cans, and the students were really independent with going through, and, you know, this is a recyclable. We have a liquid where we can dump the rest of our milk out and then recycle that container. So we took that idea. That is not what it's going to look like. That's just a possible picture of what it could look like. And we're going to introduce that to the students and then follow into next year with that. Hopefully, the middle school and high school will also be able to initiate something like that, so that we can really reduce the amount of trash that we are producing as a, as a district. On the Sustainability Festival Day, we are going to be eating outside as a grade level in the big lawn area that's in the back. We are going to have music playing, because we want students to realize that not only do we need to sustain our bodies nutritiously, but we also need to sustain our minds. And having a little bit of nice music in the background, Mrs. Calhoun from the elementary school is helping us out with that. Eventually, we would like to maybe invite high school students to possibly play some music or have that a cappella group, that amazing group that we have at the high school. But this year, like we said, we're going to start off a little small and just kind of work from there, but those, those are some of our hopes. And then finally, as you were talking about before, we're not even talking about paper straws. We are going straw-free. So the new initiative for Putnam Valley that we're hoping to continue into next year, as well as into the middle school and high school, would be a straw-free initiative. We do understand that there are certain students that may perhaps require a straw, and if that is the case, then there are other sustainable ways of providing that to them, such as the silicone straws or metal straws. But we're really hoping to get rid of the plastic straws, because they're really not needed, and they are really harmful to the environment, and we want students to be able to see that and participate in that. So we are starting with that as well, and then that's it.
Yeah, straws actually won't be available sitting there. So it's not that they'll be there and we're just trying to ask students not to use them. They won't be sitting there any longer, because you can drink your juice without a straw. So. Oh, this is more of what it will look like. A centrally-located garbage can system, so that they're not against a wall, which will prob, would probably not thrill our maintenance guys, but something centrally-located where kids can dump their garbage, and we'll have people that can help them navigate it for the first little bit. Looking into the future, as we mentioned, we came, we moved away from the week-long celebration, which sort of blurred the lines, to a one-day festival. In 2020, what we'd like to do is broaden it and include other schools, but finding that the school day really constrains us with schedule. There are so many different stations we could have that could accommodate K through 12, and families, getting them involved, that they could be different community stations, and music, and a real sense of festival. Again, I know that Warwick has a festival, and we loved the idea that they were using old chairs and had an, the high schoolers reinvented the chair, and they'd auctioned them off to the community, and they were beautiful pieces. So we loved that idea, and we want to make it our own with our own spin on it. But it is a good way, I think, to connect not only with the community, but with all three schools, to bring it home. Whether kids are running stations for community and community-running stations for kids, you'd have a day of sustainability-themed things, and there are lots of activities you could do. It was really hard to limit and, and try and figure out what we could do that would draw people in. So that's our look into the future, just broadening the festival itself.
So more on curriculum connections. So as you heard last year, you know, SELF began working with teachers, two years ago, actually. And I know that teachers across the district have been implementing different lessons and big ideas into their curriculum, which that has been happening. This year, through the new Science 21 curriculum, there, they have been written, they have been written for the New York State Next Gen Science Standards, and there are a lot of sustainability connections that come out in all lessons. So this year, we started with K-3. The fourth-grade curriculum has not been written yet. That is actually being written this summer. And once that's written, then we can look at that curriculum as well and pull out those sustainability connections. But right now, we've started with one teacher from each grade level on K-3, and we've already been working with them to pull out the sustainability connections, so that they can then do that in the classroom. And then with Liz's help, looking into next year, she will really be helping to implement other things as well through her time that she has with students. So we're really hoping to continue on with that. So we're really hoping to continue on with that and move forward with the curriculum.
And again, building community connections. We realize the value in doing that, the importance of getting to know each other, our differences, our needs and being able to help one another. So we're pushing that in a big way for the future.
And then finally, our hope is to be definitely moving into both the middle school and high school campuses for everything that we've been talking about. We know that there have been teachers who have been using the SDGs that you see at the bottom of the screen. And our hope is to just make sure, and looking into next year, our plan is to make sure that everything vertically aligns. So that what we're doing in the elementary school, what they're doing in the middle school then builds upon that. So there's no redundancy so that the students are really learning and, you know, opening and getting an aware, more awareness of sustainability. So that's what our, our view is for next year is just to make sure that everything is completely vertically aligned.
That's it.
And we're hoping everybody understands they can have an ability to make a difference.
And, and it's great because everybody can. It doesn't matter what socioeconomic level you are, where you live, city, country. At any point, you can do something that helps sustain. So that is, that's a, it's a great leveller, which I think is great.
Is there a way that during your festival, which is an amazing idea, that kids can take home something from the four stations so that they can, because sometimes it's hard, you know, what did you learn in school today?
Nothing.
Nothing? Or we had a really good day. Well, like what specifically? Well, I don't know. They explained about the poll. Well, what did, I mean, you know what I mean? Just sort of like a little, this is what we did so to make that community connection.
So we were actually talking to Vicky and Lisa about that, actually, that they could help us maybe come up with something, a little activity packet that they could take home with them so that there can be that conversation with parents. One other thing that we forgot to mention that's just popping into my head now about that school-home connection. We do have a Sustain PV Facebook page that we will be posting things about throughout the festival and things like that. I totally forgot about that. I'm really not good at Facebook, so I'm trying. I know, we're so bad with that, but we're trying. So there will be things posted on there as well. And hopefully, that can also get that school-home connection as well. But we will have a little activity packet that they're going to help us put together. So that there is that. Because I know when you ask it, and they're like, I do nothing. You know, like one of those kind of deals, so.
And that's another reason why we want to move it to a Saturday so that parents are involved. So that we're there, we're making community connections. There's a lot of, I think there are a lot of families that want to get to know teachers and, and people that are working with their kids every day. So it's an opportunity. So hopefully.
Great. That is great.
I mean, one of the challenges with communication, et cetera, is you want to use any more paper or any more plastic or tchotchkes or anything like that to demonstrate when that's counter to what you're trying to do.
Maybe a picture that they can access on a, you know, on a website of their child doing one of the activities or something.
Well, we, and, and we've tried, we've thought a lot about community connections and, which is why we also chose, asked Sam Oliverio to be a part of this.
Since he was there when the district was founded.
But we've also talked to him about a community garbage pickup where we would post, ask, we're not, it's not a school event or a town event, as it turns out, but it's an encouraged event where we would set a date and we would post the pictures if you send them in. So in other words, please clean up your stretch of property in front of your house and send us your picture. We'll post it. And woo-hoo. But different things like that where we can interact and say, great job to one another, really.
Something that just came to my mind, talking about something where the students could take them home is, I know when you go to a conference, you get sort of the plastic name tag holder and you bring something home that if we did something with cardstock and then with twine or something that, so you don't have to use plastic. And then have the students draw a picture or write something about sort of what their takeaway from the day was. It's probably something they can do quick and easy back in their classroom at the end of the day. And if they wear it home, they could say, like, Sustain PV on one side and then on the other side could be a picture. And if they wear it home, then it would certainly be a conversation starter for the parents to say, like, where did you get that? Or where did you make it? So it's something that would be sustainable.
That's a good idea. And I have that.
And, sorry.
Good thinking, Dr. Calhoun.
I'm sure Self will think of something better, but it just pops in my head when you were talking about it.
And this week, you know, what I keep thinking of is combining everything that we could hear about up here was the science symposium, maybe kind of encouraging some of our STEM students, especially maybe the incoming freshman or freshman incoming sophomores who haven't selected their topic yet. I mean, the, the wealth of topics that they can pick is, yeah.
There are lots of ways that we can infiltrate the other schools, the, the other campus. I mean, there are tons of environmental competitions, like we do science competitions, that are really great for middle and high school. We just have to bring it there. So I'm with you. I'm looking to do it. We're going to do it.
Around here, you want something done, let a student do it and they'll get it done. But I know it takes some time to get there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Love the shoes. Love, love, love. Natalie, you do have children's size because we have kindergartners that that's their entire leg.
You know, it's, it's really, this is really the beauty of education. And in a, in a school, this is the best of what we can do. And having Self here to sort of, you know, spread seeds and ideas and have our teachers pick up these ideas and run with them in a beautiful way. Because I, I think that is the purpose, is to own it. You know, we have to own it as a community, as a district community, and then share it with the larger community. Because there are people out there who are very excited about this whole idea of sustainability and, and, and a different way of looking at green, which is much more than recycling. And I think what we do as a school could be a leadership sort of lighthouse for a lot of learning and understanding by, by the community. And it's, it's a way to bring people together. People talk about divisions, but in essence, these are the kinds of things that bring people together. The food bank and so on. Bringing that, the knowledge that this is really something we all share. And I, I just can't say enough about our teacher leadership. And, you know, how as a district, there is, there are ways that we, we try to open windows, you know, for people to have that initiative and take up that initiative. So thank you. Thank you all so much for what you're doing.
And I wouldn't worry about thanking Dave Spittle. This lights him up from the bottom of his toes to the top of his head. So he's, being allowed to be a part of it, I'm sure, just thrilled. Okay. All right, now that was fun. And now we have to talk about the Westchester Putnam School Board Association's State of Officers and Board of Directors vote.
That's fun, too.
It is fun. I didn't say it wasn't fun.
You made it sound like it wasn't so fun.
And now, and now we get to talk about it. So who wants to talk about it?
Well, I mean, we're, we belong to the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association. They sent us their budget for the year plus their officers that are running, people that are running. I didn't see on there, it keeps referring to a ballot.
I have the ballot.
Oh, you have the ballot.
Yes, they have the ballot.
So we would have to, what does the ballot say? That we approve of the budget and the slate of officers?
Yes.
Okay, so.
And did everybody get that in their email? It was long.
Yeah, well, yeah. And the budget is about $265,000 about. And our component of that is about $3,540.
That's all covered by dues. It's not additional dollars. It's just dues.
That's dues, yes.
And they do, they do training for current board members, future board members. They try to keep us up to date. They represent us in Albany. They do a lot of work, but make it local. The, the New York State School Boards Association is also an important organization. But they're dealing with New York State. This is really Westchester Putnam. So their, their meetings are close. Their, their topics always have to do with the things that are involving us. And they're a really great support system.
They never have to worry about the big five school districts. They're always worrying about us.
Right, so.
Okay, okay.
And there'll be a resolution. There's a resolution.
I don't know, Maureen, is there a resolution?
Yeah, there's a resolution to approve.
Yes, there is a resolution.
And before you start your business tonight, refresh your computers. There was a jumble with the vote numbers. So if you refresh your computers, the numbers will come out.
Go do that.
Okay. I don't know. How do you do that?
You just start it again. Just sign out of it and go back in.
Do the little swirlie arrow.
Is there a kindergartner in the audience that teaches?
Should we discuss the one strange character who's running for the directors of the Putnam Valley, the Westchester Putnam School Board, or we don't have to?
And we may discuss.
Strange, strange.
Yes, Dr. Calhoun is on the sweep.
I am. It would be, it's, it will be nice to have a Putnam person on the committee. So they promised me it would be easy. We'll see how that goes.
Okay. All right, moving on. Now, see, I've lost my agenda. So I know we don't have a student report today and I don't see Christina Casey. So I don't think we have a PTA, PTSA report. So that moves us right along to you, Dr. Luft.
You got it. I got a nice quick one today. So I want to talk real quick about facilities update. We recently had a meeting of our advisory committee. So some of the items that we spoke about to the larger advisory committee, which now that committee, just a reminder, consists of community members, teachers, administrators, architects and construction managers. So everyone was present. We talked a little bit about, we recently held a focus group looking just at kitchen design at the middle school. It was actually really exciting. I fought my hardest for a brick oven pizza. And then I found out that 51% of the materials we have to serve must be whole wheat and therefore, they will not rise the same way that pizza would. So it did not sound like my investment in the brick oven pizza was going to come to fruition, but I tried my best. But we did talk a lot about sort of our vision for what we would like to serve the students, how many students we would eventually serve. So it was a lot of conversation about having food that's made from scratch, having options for students to, for them to make the food to order as opposed to it all being predetermined and having sort of a variety of options available as well as having some common ones that they know are always available. We talked a lot about when parents know that there'll be something their child will eat every day, it removes that burden of them looking at the lunch menu to decide if this is a day they're going to buy or not. And then if they get there and their, their usual sandwich is always available, but they see something else that they think is interesting or looks good, that they are more likely to try something new. So lots of exciting things. And all those things, obviously, what we're going to serve then dictates what we need to purchase and what needs to fit in that space. So it was a good conversation. And I know the architects left with some ideas to start fitting in equipment into that space. They're also looking at the existing equipment that we have in that space to see if there's anything that we can reuse. So whenever possible, we certainly want to reuse the equipment that's in there. We had a separate focus group that met to discuss turf options for the Health and Wellness Center. And I know this is something that the concern was raised throughout the, the communication of the facilities project. So it's something that we want to take very serious. We met with one vendor who came in with 20 pieces of green hair, which I thought they were, but they're actually, they weren't toupees. They were turf. Which we quickly sort of went through and figured out like what's best for indoor settings. We came down to two settings. And really, something that the group of us were interested in was finding indoor options that did not have the, really any infill, whether it be rubberized or cork or apparently you can use like walnut shells now. There's all kinds of new things that I had no idea even existed.
Back to sustainability.
For indoor turf. But really, I think where, the option where we landed was really in, it would have a padding underneath it that would actually not be rubberized. It's like a foam padding underneath it. It would have sand at the bottom of it, which would simply serve as a ballast, just the weight to keep it from shifting around the space. And even the sand comes with a safer version where they have a coating on it so it does not deteriorate in turn sort of into dust, which sand can do over the course of time. So they have actually a coated sand that won't break down the same way. One of the big pieces we noticed is just looking at the options, the infill versus the non-infill options. The table was covered in the, yeah, in the rubberized black material that they used to infill it in. And the thought of how much of that would be tracked out of the Health and Wellness Center and into every nook and cranny corner of our buildings where I felt as if our maintenance staff may go on strike, so.
Or we'd have to hire nine more.
So we really liked the idea of having a material with no infill in it because that would obviously reduce any exposure to plastic off-gassing and stuff like that as well as make the lives of our maintenance crew a little bit easier. And I guess the kicker of the whole conversation is, is the G-max rating, which is the amount of impact you have by hitting the surface between the options, is exactly the same. So it's no difference in terms of the, of the use of the space and what will be happening in that space. So that was obviously all good news. We also shared drawings of the logistics plan, which is fancy talk for where we're going to park all these people and store all this stuff. So there'll be an area set up in the back on the field, outside of the baseball field. It will not infringe on the baseball field, which was a concern we had. And also a space over in the middle school in the parking lot. We will lose some spaces in the parking lot, but we know we can, we can deal with the loss of those spaces because for the last at least 30 years since I've been here, those spaces technically didn't exist during the day anyway because it was outdoor recess space. So we're essentially recapturing a piece of that outdoor recess space now that recess is in, behind the building. And it will be fenced off. And we talked about movement of people, of construction workers and timeframes and stuff like that.
Isn't there where solar panels were put anywhere, anyway, when they did?
It's not going to be so far in the corner. It's going to be closer to the building. The difference now with this is, is they need direct access to the building. They need to be able to get materials from point A, the staging area, into the building directly through sort of a secured off corridor. So we can't really do it all the way across the parking lot. The closer to the building, the better. It can't be right up against the building because we don't want to infringe on our parking for our buses for dismissal, the way they loop around for arrivals. And then the other concern that was brought up by Brian Mansfield was the, the deliveries we get for food service. And they come in huge tractor trailers and they need to be able to drive through, pull up and back in without being sort of stuck over on that side of the field. As well as obvious things like access for ambulances and fire trucks and stuff like that if there was ever an emergency. So all of that will, will certainly, we'll update the facilities website page with the presentations. And that's all coming. Right now, the group we're currently putting together is a cultural arts-focused group. And they're really going to be a group of individuals who talk about the stage at the middle school as well as the auditorium at the elementary school in terms of what exactly do we need? What are our priorities of things that are going to happen in those spaces? So that's the next group that's scheduled to meet. And then our larger advisory committee will come back together again in June or so. We remain on time for, for the documents to go up to the state by the end of the summer. We hope to receive state approval in the fall. We hope to begin bidding this project, late fall, early winter. We hope to begin work early spring. And that would be both in the courtyard at the middle school as well as the Health and Wellness Center. We hope to work throughout the spring and summer with a project with our buildings ready to open in September and a project completion date of the following December. So it seems a little amazing that all of this work would be done in one calendar year. But that's the anticipated timeline that we have right now.
That's great.
My other item, I just want to talk a little bit about, I know that Vicky, Lisa, Jen and Liz spoke a lot about Self and really everything that I was going to speak about, they covered in their presentation. But I just want to give them credit. There's a tremendous amount of work that's gone into this. I know we're always our own worst critics. When you walk around and you're like, oh, it's just not there all the time. But then when you sort of take a step out and hear, you're like, wow, we're really doing a lot. It's not always in your face. It's not always as visible. But when you look for it, we have lots of teachers making many connections to sustainability. And it's something that's really exciting. Those connections are happening both in sort of these projects and events and professional development opportunities. development opportunities, as well as in classrooms where they're making curricular connections. So that's all really exciting stuff. And I don't want to steal Fran's stuff, but I know she's going to talk about, but I just want to recognize that this is the season for athletic championships and playoffs, cultural arts performances. We are in concert season, and certainly academics at the forefront, finishing AP exams, getting ready for our regions. And also, I did want to recognize the night of the year where I feel dumbest is when you see the science research projects, and just going through and looking at them and hearing students talk about them, it's amazing that that work was completed by high school students because it looks more like doctoral dissertation defenses. So always an impressive event. Thank you.
And before I turn the microphone over to Dr. Wills for her superintendent's report, very appropriately so, Dr. Wills was honored this evening by our Putnam Valley Business Network, and they presented her with this plaque that states, "Putnam Valley Business Network honors Dr. Frances Wills for her dedication and service to the Putnam Valley School District. Thank you for your service." And anyone who thinks the superintendent's role is confined to the campus and to the school is absolutely wrong. One of the prime roles is developing partnerships with the community, whether it's the business, the town. And I don't know anybody else who could possibly have done that better than Dr. Wills has. She somehow gets people to see her way and keep in mind what's important to the district in all of their decisions, and clearly was well respected by her getting this award. And I didn't think she'd blow her own horn enough, so I wanted to talk about it. Also, Mr. Oliverio reached out to Senator Sue Serino, who has been a friend of the districts and has helped us in a number of ways, and had presented Dr. Wills with this proclamation.
Don't read it.
It's very long, but it basically says she's absolutely wonderful, she has done wonderful things, and I'm just going to read this one paragraph. "The Putnam Valley community is indeed fortunate and blessed to have such a dedicated and respected educational leader. Her wisdom and contributions reach into every classroom, truly making a difference in the lives of those lucky enough to work with her." So I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. Yes, it is, it is an honor to, I was quite surprised and honored with that presentation this evening. And I will say that Dr. Luft and Dr. Doherty were there, as well as Jeanne DeNik. And Dr. Luft has tremendous connections, relationships as well in the community, and I have no doubt that this whole process is going to keep moving on in, in a very good way for Putnam Valley, particularly when I hear the sustainability report. You know, the seeds were planted and we see growth. And it's, it's a wonderful thing to acknowledge that there is this sense of something generative, growing, and positive. There aren't too many places that we can look out in our society and our world and see this kind of energy. It's very good energy that's coming from our students, our staff, you know. Dr. Luft mentioned the science symposium, and it is breathtaking when you see the work that the students have done. And when you have the judges who are there from our community, these are community members coming in, looking at every one of these research projects, listening to the students, and commenting, creating, you know, critiques, and having this feedback. This is an amazing, this whole library was filled. There wasn't, it was hardly room to walk around, but you know, it was, it was a great feeling of engagement. And all of those projects are engaging in the world. You know, the project that Dora Repon had, has where she's talking about habitable planets, that's what people are talking about now, you know? Finding a place in the universe, which is similar to Earth. We had Sarah Broas's work on creating human cells from mint leaves, growing them on mint leaves. In other words, using different types of natural, we talked about nature, that is a sustainability project. We talked about nature, and this is one of those projects that is so exciting, of course she, she won an international award last year. So, and Dora won a first place this year. So we really are growing in that area, and, and it is extremely exciting to see where the students are going to school, where they're going to college, what they're studying, the students who are in science research, the kind of scholarships they've received, the entree they have. This is what we all dreamed about when we all gathered to make these things happen, and it's, it's very exciting and very fruitful. So I'll start just by saying thank you for the support of the budget to the community because the fiscal plan contains these kinds of instructional goals. It, it can't happen without a fiscal plan, and that plan, which Jill Figarola has really cultivated in a way that creates the opportunities for us, in the position that we can make these things happen. So I wanted to say something about that. The, the town hall budget discussion that we had was very well received, and we went, you know, to the town hall prior to the budget so that, a couple of times, to talk about what we were doing. This, we also had in the last couple of weeks the reenactment of the Revolutionary War here in the fourth grade at the elementary school, fourth grade, high school was there. Again, this is something we see. High school band came, they stayed the whole time to play the fife and drum and make a very lively, lively event out of that reenactment, which was brought to us by a teacher a couple of years ago. And, you know, this is something that is amazing that these kids are involved in. We have the, the medical booth, which is always a favorite, where the amputations take place. And, you know, these are.
Simulated, of course.
Simulated, yes. But, I mean.
Only for the misbehaving.
Yeah. But the, the whole environment for kids, bringing history, making it alive, you know, bringing it to life, amazing. We have our community read that we're involved in. Again, it's, this is a community connection with the public library, and I know that Jeanette Mistrada will be picking that up and working with the library. She's, she's come to the meetings, and the book is Into the Beautiful North that everyone is reading, will be reading. And that's a book that deals with immigration in a different way than we necessarily think about it. And the, the folks from the library have been really excited about some of the questions and some of the groups. They'll be all over the community, including in this library on Ju-, on July 31st, because this will be done during the summer this year, the community read. We had a spelling bee at the elementary school. We brought that back, actually the PTA brought that back, and it was really, you know, sort of that old fashioned feeling of students who were, you know, these five finalists, and they were really wonderful, and everyone there felt that they were doing something that, again, is part of a tradition. Sometimes we need to be reminded of our traditions. The scholarship dinner I attended last evening, and it's something that superintendents, the lower council of superintendents sponsors, it's a dinner with the valedictorian and the salavatorian of each school district in the entire, each school actually, each high school in this entire region. So there were hundreds of, of these very, very special scholars there, and our scholars, Sarah Broas and Dora Repon were there, and we, so was Jeanine Ruffo, our board president, because the board president attends, the superintendent attends, and the principal. Dr. Triari was there as well. And we have a lovely dinner, we hear a speaker. Last evening, the speaker was, you know, spoke about globalization of the digital, the new digital world, so to speak. He was a representative from Google, and talked about, you know, what is happening, what the future will be for our students. And it's, it's really daunting. I mean, for someone like me, you know, coming out of the forties, the fifties, the sixties, introduced to the computer in the eighties, what's happened in the world is, is almost beyond recognition. And it's, it's something that makes you wonder what will be the next step for these students when they are graduating from college, what will it be like? You know, what will AI have become? So it was a great talk, and, you know, I, I should mention that Sarah Broas also received a Pride in Putnam Valley certificate and award for her work with the sixth grade scientists. She brought the sixth grade and, you know, helped train them in all of the nuances of project articulation of a project, a research project, brought them, not the sixth grade, I mean the fourth grade.
Fourth grade.
The fourth grade to the, a tri-state, a tri-state program of science research for that age level. And so our students were there. From the science fair in fourth grade, these students were considered ready to go on. And it was, again, one of those experiences where a high school student is involved with the younger students, and it brings the whole process full circle. We had an incredible high school music presentation on May 17th. Gavin Mitchell, who was one of our seniors, who was an amazing singer and actor and musician, worked with the principal to bring a really remarkable music group to our high school. Worked, they worked with the students on the various instruments that, that they played and on how music is produced. They presented their, you know, music to the high school students who came into the pack, and also Gavin and one of our other students sang with the group.
Kira McGinty.
Kira McGinty.
What is the name?
Kira McGinty.
Kira McGinty, yes. Thank you for helping me with the names.
And they held their own.
Because names are, Kira McGinty, exactly. It was amazing to hear them, and it is, and they felt that they had accomplished so much, the students, when they were singing with this, this group. And everyone who came in just felt this terrific sense of sort of peace and togetherness that's, that this community, that this high school is developing among its students, this sense of community. So it was an incredible, incredible production that Gavin himself took on the initiative to, to create. So our students, students have agency here, and that's what we're trying to, to develop. Also, we, our team has been meeting with Altaris, which is our safety consultant, and, you know, there's a huge amount for us to learn. We are doing all the drills, and there's always more for us to, to learn about this sort of awful new dimension of the work of school districts, and ensuring that our schools are safe places for everyone. And it is, it is daunting. We have these very, you know, these scary drills, lockdowns, you know, lockouts. It's, it's no longer just the fire drill. And there's a constant reminder of, you know, the environment, the larger world that's out there, and there is a vulnerability that every school district feels, and every school feels, that we are doing everything we can. The technology we've developed that people like Mike and Matt have developed to help us with our new walkie-talkie system. Someday we should have a presentation probably about some of the new approaches that we have in this, in this area. I just want to wish everyone a, a really safe and happy Memorial Day weekend. We're honoring those who died in, in the service of our country, and we also celebrate who we are as a nation and what we can do. Look at what we can do with our students and in this community. It's really remarkable.
Thank you, Dr. Wills. All right, at this point, I'd like to open it up to public comment on any of the agenda items. And now we can move right into new business. And Mr. Furrow, I ask you to start us off with number one.
This is about the minutes from 2018.
It's the vote.
Cricket, cricket. I know, I'm kidding. I know.
It's a little late.
Cricket, cricket. Resolved by the Board of Education to accept the final vote tally for the budget vote and board election held on May 21st, 2019 as follows. Proposition one, budget, yes, 648, no, 354. Board of Education, Jeanine Ruffo, 625, Jeanette Yeder, 552, Thomas Sawyer, 483, write-ins, 15. Second.
Questions or comments?
A couple. First of all, we broke a thousand voters. This is so exciting, which is really sad that I should be excited that thirteen percent of our eligible voters voted. It's, it, it just makes me sad. But I will say that, that I was glad that we broke a thousand. You were talking about Gavin Mitchell before, so it was his birthday on the 21st. So he had, he couldn't vote until that day.
Oh, that's funny.
And then he got there, and his name wasn't on the list, and he's like, oh, but I really wanted to, anyway. So it's nice to see our students also coming out to vote. I would like to ask Mrs. Bellino, if I, I would like to request a poll of the list of voters, people who voted. Mr. Cohen and I will go over the list. Just curious as to see who in our community voted, who is taking the time to stand up or stand against our budget.
But express their interest.
But at least come out and say, I want to participate in this process. So Mr. Cohen has agreed to go through the list with me. We promise not to send any nasty notes to people, but I do want people to know that we're watching, we care, and we really want more people involved in the process.
And appreciate their voice, for sure.
Right. I will say that, so they, they broke down the list of voters by ages. So eighteen to twenty-nine year olds was like seven percent of the vote, which is normal because they're, you know, they're, that's the young people, but I'd like to see more of them participate. The thirty to fifty-four years range was forty-three percent of our vote, which makes sense, but those are the parents, and there should be many more parents who are involved in this process. The fifty-five to seventy-five year olds, or seventy-four year olds is forty-one percent, so I'm glad that those people, when they were parents, we trained them, and they come out to vote, but we need to have more people in that group also. And then the seventy-five and older group turned out to be eight percent, but, you know, there are, there are less in our total population. So anyway, I was glad to see that, I was glad to see the breakdown, and I'll be interested in seeing the, the poll list of the people who voted.
All right.
Thank you.
And I just want to add my thanks to all of you who supported, who came out and expressed your voice, and for those of you who did support the budget, because we know how hard Ms. Figarola and our whole staff worked to ensure that it is one that is both educationally and fiscally sound. And I want to thank both Mr. Sawyer and Mrs. Yeder for jumping in since we'll be saying goodbye at our last board meeting to one of our board members. So thank everybody for really making this a very thoughtful process with some great discussions. All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved to approve the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association 2019-20 Nominating Committees Slate of Officers and Members of the Board of Directors and the 2019-20 Proposed Budget and authorize the Board of Education President to sign the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association Annual Meeting Ballot Document Number 170/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Jonathan Hogan to a four-year probationary appointment as an ENL teacher effective September 1st, 2019, and terminating on August 23rd, 2023, in the tenure area of ESOL at the elementary school on Step 2A of the PVFT salary schedule. Mr. Hogan holds ESOL professional certification. In order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said employee must receive at least three APPR ratings of effective or highly effective during the four-year probationary term, and may not receive an ineffective rating in the final year of probation.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Wait, you want to just define the?
Wait, you want to just define the, ENL is English as a new language.
New language, yes.
And ESOL is?
English as a second, a second language.
English, okay.
Second other language.
Okay, all right.
They have two different designations, but the new tenure area is ENL.
Okay, it's just that, and we were talking about this before, you know, we use these, you know, these labels, and I don't, I knew ESL, but I wasn't sure of the ESOL. Okay, all right.
Good question, though. All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to appoint Karen Cruzy as the 2018-19 Testing Accommodation Coordinator with a stipend of $1,500.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Be it resolved that the resolution approved by the Board of Education at the board meeting on February 7th, 2019, awarding the bid for asbestos abatement of the elementary school windows to Unipro Environmental LLC is hereby rescinded as a result of their inability to provide required insurance. And be it further resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby awards the bid for the asbestos abatement of the elementary school windows to Environmental Maintenance Contractors, Inc., the lowest responsible and qualified bidder, meeting the specifications and authorize the Superintendent of Schools or the Board of Education President to enter into a contract attached to the official minutes of this meeting as document number 17519.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda, number one.
And a note that ESOL stands for English to Speakers of Other Languages.
Okay, thank you, Ralph.
Thank you.
The Google machine made that happen.
Because it may not be a second language. Some of our students may be learning-
And next, we have resolved-
English as a speaker.
English to speakers of other languages.
To speakers of other languages.
Oh, to speak, okay.
Moving on, resolved to approve consent agenda items two through 10 as appears on the consent agenda portion of this agenda.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving CSE, CPSE placements. We're approving a contract with the Lakeland School District for 14 Putnam Valley students who attend private schools, basically the Catholic school in the Lakeland School District. We're approving one additional worker who worked at the election. We're approving a special ed program with ASEP to help us file grants and other applications. We're accepting a grant from the Fund for Excellence in Education of $2,500, which will be used for student initiatives at the high school under Ms. Forster. We're mending the World Language Speaking Examination Proposal to reflect the exact number of students and that we will only have two staff members doing it. We're approving, we're authorizing our attorney to review a contract with the Highland Falls District. Highland Falls Fort Montgomery School Districts for one non-resident student who will be coming to Putnam Valley. We're mending the independent educational evaluation for students that were approved on 2013, for, that was approved on 2013, 2019, where we now will pay the teacher, the person directly, not through their organization. And finally, we're approving additions to substitute to the list.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, I'd like to open it up to public contribution on any topic.
Just one additional comment about the science research. One of the things that impressed me more than anything is when you went up to the students, they were basically reading, you know, from their posters, and every so often, they would say something which I did not understand, and I would ask-
Every so often?
Yeah. It happened like 13 times. But the amazing thing is, when you asked them about clarity, they were able to explain it in a language that even I understood. It wasn't just that they had, were sitting there reading these technical, they actually understood what they were doing. It was all so impressive.
Last night, I was at the dinner with Dr. Wells, and Sarah Bros was there, and she said that her original mentor turned her down because I don't take high school interns. And she's, you know, we always teach our students about persuasive essays. She wrote a persuasive essay and then appeared at her office and made an appointment, and 15 minutes later, the woman said, absolutely, and they have become, they have developed an incredible professional relationship, and she'll be working with her all summer. And one of the things that the speaker last night said, you know how every one of us was asked when we were five or six, what do you want to be when you grow up? That the question we should be asking our children now are, what problem do you want to solve? And it could be anything from world hunger to where do you put a wet umbrella when you come in a building, but anything in between, thinking, having kids think about their thinking. So, and that's what science research is absolutely about.
I went to the BOSI's National Technical Honor Society induction ceremony. It was really nice. We had four students that were being inducted. Two of them were there, two of them couldn't be there. But it was nice to see the broad range of topics that students can take through BOSI's. Everything from forestry to bakery to small motor repair to computer graphics, I mean, just really was amazing, like 13 or 14 different areas of interest. I only, I went, not only, but I went, Mrs. Entieri, Dr. Entieri could not go, and she asked me to take pictures and then send them to her. So I said, well, I'll take pictures, but I think, I don't know how to send them to you. So I went over and Dan, Dan helped me send the pictures to Sandy. But, and I hate that responsibility because it's not my thing. But anyway, it did work out, and she did post, I saw some of them on Facebook, so she did post some of them.
Success.
Success.
Pictures is Dr. Entieri's thing.
Yeah, I know, but, you know, it's not my thing. But anyway, okay, the other thing is, all of you got from Maureen, the booklet on the board self-evaluation and the superintendent's evaluation, and I kind of wanted to be sure we were on track. We don't need a, we don't have to put it on the agenda, it doesn't have to be approved, this would be through BOSI's. But I don't want to put it off too long. I looked at the board self-evaluation, and it's, it might be a little tricky this year because we haven't, didn't start it at the beginning of the year. I'd still like Ralph's input on evaluating how the board worked this year and things that may or may not have worked as well. So if we kind of like shorten the process and then use that going forward. I'm wholly in favor. Dr. Love said to me the other day, so, are you evaluating? Like, what's the plan? I'm like, I don't know, I'll bring it up at the board meeting. So I don't know where to go from here, except to say I'm in support of getting the SuperEVAL package. And I guess I need to, or Maureen needs to know, or Fran, somebody needs to know whether we're all in favor of that.
Did everybody, we did get the packet?
No.
I thought it was-
She sent me one. I'm reading through it, I'm like, wait, this is one twice. So I sent, so she sent a revised copy, but everybody got the revised copy, yeah.
And we've run it by Jill in terms of cost-
Funny.
And the fact that BOSI's gives aid on it. And you had talked about possibly a demonstration, Jill, are you comfortable with the packet?
Okay.
So I guess the next steps really is timeframe. Do we look at it during our board retreat this summer and move from there?
That's the best time.
Or maybe talk about, put it on a presentation for discussion at the start of the next meeting or an executive session?
So I'm not sure what a presentation would-
Yeah, no, we already do.
I'm not sure what that would involve. And I do think that, the only reason I don't want to wait for the board retreat is I really want Ralph's input before he leaves us. We'll be very sorry to see him go, but I do think he has some really good insights, and I'd like to hear them beforehand. I think it would be good for Dr. Love to have, to know in advance what we're going to be looking at for him so that he can plan his goals and so that we can write our goals for the board at the retreat. So I'd like to do it, I'd like to contact SuperEVAL, order the program or however it is, and then-
We have two more board meetings before the end of the year, so.
So would you like to see something else?
No, I'm just saying-
No, no, that maybe during an executive session, we can, because it's a self-evaluation.
We could use a tool, and that'll give us time with Ralphie Boy over here still on board.
I think what we'd have to do first is sign the contract to BOSI so they can build the system for us, to create the accounts, to do all that, because all of that work would have to be done prior to the board conducting the self-evaluation. I do agree, other than the self-evaluation piece in terms of the superintendent's evaluation, there would really be no need for the board to do anything before the board retreat, and it's something that we can speak about during that. It would provide me an opportunity to begin to load information into the system throughout the summer, and then we can talk about the goals piece of the platform during the board retreat later on in the summer.
Okay. So who, would that be, Jill, or who would do the contract with?
I mean, I have no problem of going through the business office and having them do it. I just wanted to make sure that it was at the will of-
Great. It is.
So it'll be written.
So it'll be done.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
I wanted to, I don't know that this is public, I shouldn't say that it's not public, but I don't know that public are invited to attend, but there was an email from, I think it was Lower Hudson, about New York State Senate having hearing on alternative funding for education that's next week, I think, in Albany, and they were not, they were not looking for community input, but looking for testimony by experts. So just to let the community know that that is, somebody took that up and is bringing that up, and something's happening, at least on a preliminary basis, to learn more about possible ways to move forward with alternative funding for education. And I also wanted to just make notice, if I remember correctly, this is the 15th graduating class of the high school? Is that correct, this year? Fifteenth, okay. Just a highlight for folks.
Yes, 2004 was the first, so this would be the 15th.
Oh, shoot, yes. It was on the other side of my page. Okay, so the audit committee met this evening. We were on the phone with Dave Moran, who's the man who usually does our internal audit, Mark Reagan, who's the executive director. We are going to get a new educational auditor, whose name is Ted Doberson. Guy was there, Stacy Tompkins, Jill Figarola was there by phone, and myself. The acumen did a risk assessment of the, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 functional areas that they, so they, every year when they do an audit, an internal audit, they look at all of the functional areas and do a brief report on each one. But they usually select one to zero in on and spend a lot of time on. Their recommendation was to focus on the area of facilities and capital assets with a focus specifically on capital projects and construction management to ensure that everything that we're doing is, lines up and is correct. So that's their recommendation. The committee supports that recommendation, and so they're going to do that in June, and we should have it by the end of July.
And I think I just did the math, and I saw, Mr. Cohen looking at pictures, it's the 16th graduating class over the course of 15 years. So it is the 16th graduating class.
Because you start with four, right.
We don't want to forget '04 and throw them out into the woods, so, okay.
Now, everybody's doing it in their head, right? Using their fingers?
So if there's nothing else from anybody else on the board, I'd like now to resolve to convene an executive session for, to discuss eight matters of the pre-employment history of eight particular persons, and one matter of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, i.e. the Taylor Law, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, and happy Memorial Day, everyone.